First, I'd like to have our Elections Committee come up. It's that time of year again, we're getting ready for elections. So Vicki, I'd like you to come up and...
Thank you darling, and thank you all for coming. I would like to introduce my team of Elections Committee. And we do have seven of us on the committee. However, we have had some emergencies happen. So I am Vicki Griffiths, and I'm the Chairperson of the Elections Committee. And I'll pass this down and let you guys all introduce yourselves.
Karen Stewart, Secretary.
I'm Charlie Ash, I'm a member.
And Darla Gessler, Member.
Pardon me. Oh yes, Jody McPherson, she is the Publicity on our Committee. And we have a couple more that aren't here. But I would like to also let you know that we do have our meetings the first Wednesday of each month, and they are virtual. You can come and watch how the process works. And each month, we will be talking about how it all works. We will be replacing two Board Members, their term is up this year. So really think about possibly running yourself. And in the Nosy Coyote, there will be information as far as dates, and what we're looking for, for people that are wanting to be on the Board. Okay? Thank you so mu... Oh, you have something to say?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say that Cindy Evans is also our Board liaison, and we support and appreciate her support and help. And also Becky Wells is an important Member of our group.
Right, thank you Karen. And Becky, you know her, she's around all the time. So, thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Patty Granger. She is with the Mayflower Tours that we take. So I'm gonna pass this on to her, and she's gonna talk about our trip from May to Scandinavia. And she's the one that furnished the donuts today, so if you guys could thank her for that.
I'm trying to bribe you with donuts. Good, well, we're gonna talk about Scandinavia today. I'm excited that we chose this destination. Show of hands, anyone been there? Oh, just a few. I want to tell you about Mayflower first, and then I want to tell you how much I love Scandinavia. So let's start with Mayflower Cruises and Tours, and we'll just go slide to slide real quickly. I have my Assistant in the back, who I appreciate very much. So, here's our circumstance. Mayflower Cruises and Tours, as a motor coach company, taking care of everybody's travel needs, literally from the beginning of the trip until we put you on the airplane to go home, has been in business for over 50 years. We're based in Chicago, Lisle, Illinois. And we were purchased, interestingly enough, in 2018 by Scenic and Emerald Cruise Line. So we are multi-talented. We have a cruise line division as well as our motor coach division. And what they wanted was, what Scenic and Emerald wanted was to find a USA company that could represent the United States, that had everything originate here, to take care of the USA passengers to go on the European River trips and our international waterways. So they said, it looks like Mayflower Cruises and Tours is our best fit, which is fantastic. And we really appreciate it that they could see the value. So what's in it for you, the Mayflower brand, is our absolute commitment to finding the best tour operators for you, the best tour managers while you're on vacation. I was just in Iceland, I loved my tour manager. She was fantastic, a local Islander, so much great information and little insider tips. And Thelma just did our Greece program, and she said the same thing. She said, the knowledge that they bring, we can go to the next slide, the knowledge that they bring and the information just makes the entire trip ever so much more fun. And in addition to that, we do have deluxe transportation, our top accommodations, all your luggage handling. Our job is to make your travel as easy, as fun, and as seamless as it can be. And we can just roll, I'm so sorry, we don't have a clicker. We travel the world, we're just gonna quickly show you all the different places we go, but we really want to focus on Scandinavia. So Scandinavia is what we're gonna discuss next, and we can go on to the next slide. And one more to get to the map of Scandinavia. So here's our departure date, May 15, which to me is a perfect time to go, because if you don't know about Scandinavia and that top half of the world, it is literally the land of midnight sun. So beginning in May, it's like everything comes alive. People have lived literally most of the day in darkness. In the winter months, it gets dark by about 3:00, and it gets light by about 11:00 in the morning. So very few daylight hours. When we go, it's exactly the opposite. You have these great full days, where you just have this wonderful sense of the whole country coming alive and green and blossoming. And you do have to be a little prepared, because it won't get dark on May 15 until about midnight, and that sun's gonna be back up by 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning. So it gives you really long days. They have great blackout curtains in all of the rooms, because it'll take you a minute to get acclimated to that. But this is where we start. We're gonna start in Stockholm, as you can see on the map, two nights in Stockholm, we can go back one more. Two nights in Stockholm, and then over to Oslo. That's the two nights touring in Stockholm, and then we'll do the motor coach to Oslo. And then we get on two different trains, some local trains, it just adds so much fun. And the train is able to take you in these vistas that are just incredible. And two of them, up to the world famous Flåne, and then a day in the fjords of Norway, two days in Bergen. And then, in the interest of saving time, from Bergen in Norway, we're gonna fly you back down to Copenhagen, where you'll enjoy that fantastic, great combination of old and new. So we're just gonna quickly go through the slides, show you the pictures of what you're gonna see. So if we could just roll them as we go. So Stockholm, just send, just to spend like a minute on each, seconds on each one. So Stockholm, great city to visit. There are some pedestrian-only zones that you can walk through without any kind of problem with cars. And then we've got a few other quick slides of Stockholm, just to give you a quick overview. Just wanna whet your appetite with the type of things that you'll see in this beautiful city. I do wanna stop on this one. So we have the opportunity to go to the Vasa Warship Museum. I've done it, it's extraordinary. I mean, when you take a look at the workmanship that went into this warship that was built in 1626, 1626, took 'em two years to complete it. You know those Vikings, they were just sort of murderous group of people. So their warships were really, really important. And two years after completing this intricate, absolutely fantastic warship, they launched it, it went 1,300 meters, and sank directly to the bottom of the harbor. So, really, really great workmanship on the outside, but they didn't quite get that ballast and stuff information right. So they've raised it, obviously, from the bottom of the harbor, and it's now a museum. And it's a fun, fun day to see. Yeah, so apparently, someone was not really wanting them to be traveling the world in this terrible warship. So, I say the gods sank it. And then we're gonna continue on to Oslo, Norway, another wonderful Scandinavian country. And I wanted to just take a minute to talk about Scandinavia as a whole, because these were my takeaways from it. Number one, not only is it beautiful, it's friendly, it's safe, it's unbelievable how many citizens, Norwegians, Swedes, and Danish, it doesn't matter. They start learning English in primary school. And it is amazing to me how you really can't go anywhere without finding someone that speaks English. And they're also so warm and welcoming, they want to tell you about their country, they want you to enjoy it, and they wanna share its riches with you. So here we are, continuing on in Oslo. And then we go up to just the incredible, beautiful fjords of Bergen. And again, these cities, as you can see, are just, not only really interesting architecturally, whether it's the Sculpture Park in Oslo, or these wonderful little pedestrian streets, but just the sheer beauty of the countryside and these untouched pristine areas are really, you must see that, and you have to see it to believe it. So we'll do a couple more quick slides of photographs. This is an interesting home, a composer, I think maybe one of the only composers from the Scandinavian countries. And then we'll continue on the slides, and will take us to this fantastic train experience that we're gonna have. And then we end up, the very last, the very last port that we see is Copenhagen. And again, same circumstance, beautiful, bright. Copenhagen is like such an interesting mix of old and new. There's very new, beautiful, upbeat, fun city. And it lives in harmony with the old towns, just these Tyvele Gardens, one of the first amusement parks, you have to do Tyvele Gardens, it's fun. They call it a pleasure park, but it was, I believe, the first amusement park. But beautiful gardens and wonderful, not only fun, exciting rides for the kids, but great things to do for the adults too. Beer gardens and a lot of history. We do go to a couple of palaces, Kristianborg is one, Kronborg is another, the original palace of Prince Hamlet. So that's an interesting, that's an interesting castle that we do as well. And then we'll just slowly move on now to our final pricing page and the special offers that we have for you. So it's just an interesting, there's a, as promised, so this is what you'll see on that railway train. You can stay on this one a minute, because just these vast, wild, you're sitting in comfort, so, safe and comfortable, but you get to have this panorama that goes all around you. And I did have someone ask me really quickly what the level of activity is, like if you had some mobility issues, was it gonna be a problem at all? And the answer is, you can have it be as active or as laid back as you want it to be. So it is possible just to enjoy, literally, you can sit on the motor coach on this beautiful panoramic view and just enjoy the scenery as it goes by, literally just looking out the windows, or looking out the windows of the train. Or you could, if you wanted to, hike each and every day, find yourself lost in these fantastic places, and you'll always make your way back. So it can be a great hiking active vacation, or, and we do stay at this hotel, I just wanna quickly mention the hotel here, the Stahlheim Hotel. So this is where we'll stay, after you see these incredible vistas, these mountains that were cut by glaciers all those years ago. It's a natural steam bath coming up from there. Just beautiful. So a perfect combination on a vacation of big city, lots of interesting shopping, lots of interesting history, and then combined with this fantastic pristine beauty. So here we are, May 20, sorry, May 15 it departs, looks like the 15 was lost. Our rate is $32.99, the single supplement is $10.99. If you are a single traveler and you do not want to pay that supplement, we have a guaranteed share program. So you tell us, I'm traveling by myself, I don't have someone to travel with me, but I will guarantee to find you a roommate so that there is no single share. If that idea does not appeal to you, and you say, no, I want that, I want that room all to myself, so then there is the single supplement. But not to worry, if you don't want to pay a single supplement, we can do a guaranteed share for you as well. Okay? And it's nice to travel with the group, it makes it a lot more fun. And then we also, for you people that don't live here year-round, we try to just plan this departure, maybe before you go home to your other home, you can fly back to that city instead if you need to. We can work those rates out for you. Okay? All right, great, thanks so much, I think I might have gone over my 15, and I appreciate the time. Any questions later?
Thank you Patty. At this time, I'd like to introduce Officer Tovar and Officer Jesse. They're gonna talk about some safety concerns, and answer some questions after they're done. So they'll be talking about safety concerns and traffic issues. Thank you.
Good morning, good morning. I'm Officer Tovar, some of you know me, some of you may not. But before I start, I've been in the unit here in Community Relations, probably about 15, 16 years. I'm kind of an anomaly back at the department. But before I start, I just wanted to introduce, we have a new Sergeant in my unit, Sergeant Galaz, and I'll let him explain about, a little bit about himself.
Hi everybody, my name's Jesus Galaz, but everyone calls me Jesse. I've been with Surprise Police Department about 19 and a half years. I've done a lot of different things in the department, between Detective, our Patrol Division, Administration, and now I'm with Community Relations, I get to work with Chris, he's a great guy. One of the big things we wanna do is, we wanna work with our communities, try and make them safer, try and make them better for you. So that's what we're gonna try and do our best to do. If you have any, ever have any questions, you ever need any assistance, you can reach out to Chris, you can reach out to myself. My door is always open, so I'll be happy to help you guys as much as I can. Thank you.
So, with that being said, this is actually my 22nd year at the department. I can't believe that, I'm in the retirement mode, so you may not see me here after three to five years out. We'll see what happens. And also, this is something on a personal level, it's my dad, he's in heaven right now, but today's his 99th birthday, so I was thinking about pops today. So, and it kind of helped me out again, because my father had me a little bit later in life, and I've always been really wanting to help, do the best I can for the senior population as well. And so, kind of been, I think I'm in the right spot. So whatever we can do to help you guys out, that's what it's all about. And I've just listened to the young lady over there talking about the Scandinavian trip, and I learned something like, a few years ago, for seniors when they wanna go have a ski vacation. You ever do a ski vacation for the seniors, and what is that? It's, ski is a little acronym for Spent Kids Inheritance, right? Go have a good time, right? So go live life and have a good time, if you can do that, do it. Right? Just a couple of things that Darla wanted me to address as a reminder to you. As far as traffic in the area, I have some statistics. Normally I give these, if you guys know Sherri Owens, Sherri pretty much puts these on the monthly report. Those come from us over here at the station, and then like, kind of try to elaborate a little bit on certain things. I can assure you that we are definitely busy, if I'm looking at someone's statistics, not in the part, not in the resort per se as much, but we are definitely keeping an eye on what's going on and around the immediate vicinity. We have quite a bit of traffic stops, you know, Cotton and Bell, this whole area is a busy area, as we know. But I can tell you that, just from looking statistically, there are officers are making their stops, making their rounds in the general vicinity. In fact, last week, 2:15 in the afternoon, on like a Wednesday, we caught a DUI at 2:00 in the afternoon. So, stuff is out there, right? I just, we don't, and it was not anybody from the resort, I can tell you that much. So, you made it home, so. But traffic related and stuff inside, what do we do with inside the resort? So in a, in a community such as this, it's a gated community. So just to kind of give you some little insight, the laws kind of don't pertain basic traffic laws as if you were on public streets. Aside from, there are a few different things that, even though they're on private property, that law enforcement can still take action. One of those is being a DUI, if somebody was DUI, you can, it can be DUI in a parking lot of a shopping plaza or within a gated community area. And the other is being reckless driving. So those are two of the main laws that pertain even to private areas. So the main thing, I would just want to pass the word on to, and for everybody who's watching online, or however you do this as well, is to please pay attention to the, to the mile markers or the speed limit signs here within the, within the community. If something happens bad enough where an accident does occur, or a collision occurs within the community, and you can tell that it was pretty much done in a negligent, or a reckless manner, could something go back and once, an investigation would need to be done? Especially, God forbid, we've had fadals, not so much here, but in areas that are in confined areas. And you'd have to go back, and these guys that we have in our Motor Division, they're pretty good at what they do, and can do some things, and they find that something's reckless. Unfortunately, something, it's a possibility that they could come back on that person. So if you know, I'm not saying it's you specifically, but if you just pay attention to the speed limits, be courteous to everybody, right? Can't we just all get along, that old saying as it goes? And be mindful of the speed limits here in the park, or, I keep saying park, forgive me. Happy about resort, right? So, let's keep... Some other things as far as safety, now this time of the year, especially, I mean it's always, but especially for the senior population, you know, I've explained this many times over the past, is that unfortunately, when you become a senior, you get a big red and white target on your back. And people are gonna come looking for you. And even if you don't realize that, you, this community obviously is very active, and there are some folks who are not as active anymore, they're kind of in later years of life and whatnot. So it's up to the rest of us, or those who are active and whatnot, to keep an eye on the rest of the folks if they're having some type of issues. Whether that be maybe losing some faculties, or slowing down, or some of those folks who live alone. If there's some things that you see that need a, some help, by all means, I think it's incumbent on everybody, right? Maybe to do, look out for one another, and if they need some assistance. We have a Resource Center at the city, City of Surprise has the Human Services, the Community Vitality Resource Center. We also have, look at that, we also have the, you know, as far as the Police Department, there's the Adult Protective Services that we work with as well. If there's a situation where somebody is either negligent to themselves, or dangerous to themselves, or others, and sometimes those folks, they don't really realize they become in that situation. But it takes the rest of, if you see something, it's okay to report something, there's Adult Protective Services, like I said, I think it's 1-800-SOAS-ADULT, it's an easy number to remember. If you see something, better to say something than not. Another thing that... Hello? Okay. So another thing is that, this time of the year with the scams are gonna be picking up as well, again. Especially for the vicinity and for the area. We got the holiday scams, the grandparents scams, folks may be calling in again and trying to lure some of your money away. We will also have, unfortunately, there's folks that go to our local shopping plazas and shopping centers that try to scam folks for out of money, and probably, and tug at your emotional heartstring and whatnot, say they need some help or whatnot. I can tell you, working, doing this for quite a few years, most of our shopping plazas have Do Not Trespass signs on their plaza. Those are private property entities. And so with that being said, is they have a form, we have a form that they sign that says that usually, if there's some issues going on in those properties, if they give the Police Department some discretion to maybe talk to some of these folks if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. In essence, none of these plazas or these shopping centers want any of these folks to bother you, the customer. Because they know sometimes there's scams, and people get taken advantage of and whatnot. So if you're not doing business with one of the businesses within the plaza, whatever that may be, pretty much it's gonna be a trespassing situation. But we, as Police Department, we run up against it sometimes, because our lawyers, and they say, hey, but if the business is open, we still wanna hear it from them during the middle of the day. But then you have this part, when you have a large plaza, and the stores are way over there, and the parking lot's way over here, and this stuff's going on, they don't even know what's going on inside the stores. So if you have a situation, and this is coming from the property managers themselves, if you see an issue with people are bugging people, or maybe harassing or whatnot in the parking, when you go into the store, feel free to let the management know. Let the manager know, say, hey, I felt threatened, or I felt uncomfortable, or there's people out there, they're bugging some of the customers, and I don't like, because you are their customers, and they wanna make sure that you guys are satisfied to the best. You know, they wanna make sure that you're spending their money in their store, correct? So if you give them a little bit of the information, that helps everybody win. Because some of these folks, like I said, I can't tell you every day the amount of fraudulent calls a week get. Especially in Surprise, we have a senior population, and the amount of calls that people call into, say they got taken for a ride, thousands and thousands of dollars, or whatever the case might be, please. Some of the things that'll come up, and we'll do our best to keep a track of them as well, is the, you might get some people out some of these shopping plazas, you ever see them play the old violin out? And it's a fake violin, and the music doesn't even match what they're doing with the violin. And they say, hey, you, well, they, they may also have their kid out with them and try to attract money, those types of things. Be cognizant and be aware of that. We have now recently put some signs up along Bell Road, and some other areas closer down to the Target Center and things that, whatnot, by Grand Avenue, some other areas out here. It says, it's okay not to give to panhandlers if you don't want to, give to a local charity. I can tell you as far as the panhandling and some of the homelessness, we're not trying to be these bad guys that we don't want, you know, we just get out of here and move on, and that'd be it. We do try our best to give them, offer, and offer them assistance through, I told you, the HSCV, the Resource Center, there's some other avenues that we can try to use to try to offer them assistance. So it's not against a lot of be homeless, it's just not against a lot of be homeless in certain areas, because some of those plazas and things, they have the No Trespassing theme. So we have to, so we work together with them. But I can assure you that we do our best to do what we can to give them services first. It's like leading a horse to water, right? Whether they take it, it's completely up to them. But the more that we're made aware of these situations, we'll politely make it uncomfortable for them to be in certain areas where they're not supposed to be. And that's only at the request of the business owner, proprietor, or if folks like yourselves make those phone calls. So that's where you guys kind of come in on that. So be careful of scams going on within, within the community. The security does a pretty good job, the gated security. We still know that if you have a visitor that comes to see you for some type of service work, I believe, we're still this way darling, that you can't go from one place to the next without letting you know in the front. So don't, don't accept, hey, I was just doing your neighbor's property down the street, and I wanted to come see what I can do for you, solicitation in that way. Because that's another avenue that sometimes people scam artists will come in, and they'll try to take advantage of you in that way as well. So we tell them, they've gotta go back to the, see darling, and the folks over there so they can get some assistance there. I just had a situation in my own house yesterday, they've got the guy who's selling solar. I don't know if the solar's real, or what, some, some's good. I didn't wanna deal with it, I haven't got the no soliciting, no soliciting sign up yet, but I can guarantee you this weekend we're gonna go get one. But a guy came out, and he's selling, him and his, like, get you a good deal, we'll get you a brand-new breaker box. What do I care, APS owns the breaker block, it doesn't matter to me, right? But I tell them, but there is certain laws, if you didn't know this, and you have HOA laws, ordinances within. But the city says, if you're gonna go out and solicit, you need to have a business license. Okay? So these guys are walking around, and the guy didn't have no, oh, I'm sure my boss has it, well, I had the paper in my hand when I came home, I gave him this, the code for, you need to have a license in hand, and you need, you need to be able to show it to the person if you're asked. The other thing is, if there's a No Solicitation sign anywhere, they are not to go to that particular location as well. There's little things like that. But there's unfortunately folks that are out, please be cognizant, please be aware. A reminder of our, we do have some folks here that belong to our We Care system. Does everybody pretty much know about We Care? If not, this is where we call people up on a daily basis, on an automated phone call. We check up on them, and basically say, hey, if you're okay, and it's just an automated system. And they answer, and they press the corresponding number on their phone dial to let us know if they're okay for that day, and that's done. If they don't answer within three calls, 15 minutes apart, so, say they wanna call at 8:00 in the morning, they missed a call, the phone's busy, 8:00, it'll call again, 8:15, and then 8:30. By 8:30, if there's no call comes in, alert goes off in our dispatch center, a little alert. The dispatcher will make one more phone call and say, hey, just to make sure, did you just miss your call, or whatnot? And if not, then we'll either send an officer and/or one of our local Citizens Patrol members to start the process. And before that, we've already obtained information on NextIfCan, somebody who's got a key, things like that. So those are usually for our vulnerable adults, folks who are kind of, like I said, those single, those people I was telling you about, they might need some help, maybe they're a fall risk, things of that. There's no charge for that yet. We haven't grown so big that we still can't continue to do that. So, any quick questions, or nothing, or we're good?
Officer Tovar, how do they, if they don't know already, how do they sign up for this We Care system?
So We Care, what you can do is, you can look on our website, it's a surpriseaz.gov, pretty much everybody's pretty good. And then you can do slash police, if you wanna go straight to the Police Department. And in there, it talks about the programs, adult programs, or you just call the 222-4000, the main number to the Police Department, and you can just ask, I want, interested in We Care, and they'll put you to our Citizens Patrol, we'll let them start the process, and do a little bit of an interview, and try to get more information from you on that part.
I have another question.
Yes ma'am.
So you're talking about...
Uh, so you're talking about, um, well, I'm talking about cyber, cyber bullying. I don't know if you can address this or if you can help, cause we have some, it's been happening a lot where people's accounts are being, um, hacked.
Right.
And their personal information is being stolen. Is there a way, can you address that in any way?
Yes, well, I, well, again, a lot of folks can be aware of that. And some of our, our folks who are losing some of their cognitive ability, but they still like to dabble with the computer or the phone. Education, education, education. Again, it's all incumbent on all of us to take care of each other. The, so basically if somebody tries to get ahold of you on the computer or on the phone, they want some type of information, do not offer any information to them. The only time you're ever going to call, if you know you're calling, like say you have to do business with your bank or whatnot, you call them and they ask you for your account number or some type of PIN number, you can do that because, but you know that you're making that call and you know who you're speaking to. Now, if you receive an incoming call, a lot of these guys are pretty, pretty sharp and they'll try to sneak their way in and get some information from you and enough, hey, I'd like to do business with you. I'm so and so from Wells Fargo Bank or whatnot and, uh, but I need your account numbers and stuff. We, people, we kind of smirk sometimes because you're very cognizant. There are some folks who are not and they will give that information. This is what I'm talking about. So no credible financial institution, this is kind of standard rule. No IR, the IRS, APS, adult protective services, I'm sorry, adult public service in this case, our power company. No legitimate foundation is going to call you and solicit your information from you to, for you to give to them. Cause once you do that, then it opens a door. Another thing that's kind of going on, I would recommend folks, if you are, uh, computers savvy and whatnot, on YouTube, there's some great things on YouTube for scam, anti scammers. There's a couple of guys out there that I still watch just to give this information to you as we do right now. These folks will call, a lot of these folks, most of these folks are calling from India and foreign countries. They have a big time accent. I'm not trying to put down any, you know, native Indians, but I'm, this is where a lot of these calls come from. And they'll try to tap in either through the phone or through the internet and they'll pretend to be the company you think you're dealing with. Like some of the cybersecurity anti, like Norton, some of these other companies that you use for your computers, they'll pretend to be whatever and they'll say, okay, in order to get to your system, uh, give me your login or sign into this thing. Like one of the things they use is something called anydesk.com. It's a something where they can plug into your computer and then take over your computer and think, and you think they're helping you. And they'll take account money, thousands, thousands, thousands of dollars. Do not give any information to people who solicit in. That's the bottom line. If you, and if somebody says they are from the bank or an establishment, hang up with them, fine, so be it. If there's an issue, you think there might be some type of discrepancy, hang up, look for the phone number and contact information for yourself from a legitimate source, then call back to that number. If they say, hey, call me back, if you want to verify who I am, call me back at this number. Well, you're calling them right back. Don't play that, okay? I know this is not rocket science folks, but sometimes it's just like they did, but they just bombard you and they use pressurized tactics to make you think that you need to do this. So hopefully that answers some of the questions. So don't fall into that. When you receive emails, you don't know what it is, don't open it if you can, fish, put it on, um, junk mail and delete it, whatnot. I will tell you too, the do not call registry, that was kind of a joke for a while. If you guys know for your cell phones, the robocalls and things of that nature. I just saw another recent, uh, news report that they are just re, reamping that up or however you want to call it to make it more secure. So do notcall.gov or one eight hundred do not call, either one, if you call them up from the number that you have and tell them that, you know, you want to be part of this program again, they are reamping this program to make it more, supposed to be, making it more hard for you to receive these bogus calls, right? Even your phone, some may say scam call possibly or something coming in. You know, we're getting these phone calls from India, hey, I'm so and so, I'm here to check up on your 2012 Nissan Altima. I don't drive a Nissan Altima, it's all, you know, but they gets you to answer yes, that's what happens. Uh, I think that's pretty much all that we have. We will see you November 29th for the big parade, right? We're coming out for that. So that'll be good, we'll, we'll be representing. Do you have a question back there, is there anybody? Are you Sue? That's Sue, cool. So we'll be here, ready to go, Sue, we'll be leading the parade. Um, no throwing eggs at us, that type of deal, so, um, and then, and folks, I know we, we had a, D backs lost, Rangers won, good, bad, right? You know, it's kind of like, I was kind of rooting and then, and we're both big time baseball fans. Yes, are there any, I got a couple of items here from the Kansas City Royals, really nice. Are there any tickets that people have not been given to that we can collect? Okay, do you have them through here? It's all good. And I'm going to mix these up over here, thank you. So these are, every year we do our police night, uh, we had, uh, gain getting Arizona involved in neighborhoods. In fact, so thank you to those folks who donated some candy to help us out for the event. We had quite a bit of people. Sarge, you want to mix it up and take a couple of numbers? Um, Kansas City Royals gave us some really nice stuff. There's some, like this thing here is an eighty dollar shirt at the store. It's a really nice, cool thing here. And we had a couple of extras, so we wanted to give back to you guys as well. Uh, during Christmas time, Darlene, may I ask, you guys still do with the Christmas angel tree with Salvation Army? Okay, so we won't interfere with that. We do a Christmas toy drive, I will tell you this, um, but I, that's what I, I don't purposely come in to try, cause we're all on the same team, right? We want to give back to, last year we helped out about a hundred and forty families through ourselves and human services, Vital, uh, Community Vitality, uh, to the underprivileged folks. So whatever you're doing is great. Uh, we do some other, there'll be some other drop off locations around the city, right around Chris, uh, after Thanksgiving. If you see something, if you don't want to do a big old tree or, or I shouldn't say big tree, but if you want to add to the collection or whatever, if you want to drop in some, some wrapping paper, that would be cool. Do you guys do wrapping paper or just toys? Toys, maybe we can do a box for wrap, cause we're short on wrapping paper. Can we do that maybe? We'll put a box up for wrap if you guys have to mold stuff. We'll take whatever we can do and we help a lot of families. So we get a lot of good tears, a lot of good, a lot of good feeling back for the department. Everybody sure? Okay, it's the first blue one here. This first number, cause they're all seven five fives, right? So we have five zero four, five hundred four. Seven five five, I'm sorry, seven five six. Oh, Dale got it over there. Thank you, sir. Oh, that's, that's fine, you don't need that. Five zero four. This is another, this is, these are really nice, this is nice. Let me take this, no, I'm just teasing, uh, this fit me great. Nice Kansas City Royals Nike, nice golf shirt. Was or is. Last three are four, five, three, four, five, three. Sorry, Roberta. I tried to bend the theme for you, but the twenty dollars didn't work. Yeah. We got it over there. Guys, really, thank you, please be safe and thank you for all we can do for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Tovar and Officer Jesse. Does anyone have any questions for them? Safety in the community, outside of the community, anything? Okay.
I was just going to ask, um, when you see these people panhandling and they're in the nice clothes and they've got the nice umbrella and, and of course a couple of kids or maybe an animal with them, uh, is there a place to report that or what?
That, that could be reported to the, so here's the deal. If it's on a community, I forgot to mention, if it's on a private property, first thing I would do is like, it's tell to the store to give them, bring it to their attention. And then if they have a trust, if you notice, like most of these plazas, not all, but have no trespassing signs. If that's the case, feel free to call the department as well, we don't mind that, but it preferably from the store and have them give us a call. One other thing I forgot to mention as far as it comes to panhandling things of that nature is that, uh, the city surprise is one of the few cities that I know of, which I think is a good ordinance that we have, is you cannot stand in the middle of the median within the city blocks. So Bell Road, if you notice, we don't have too many of that. But if you go further down, if you're driving down on the north side of El Mirage and Bell, on the north side, that's Maricopa County jurisdiction, those guys live out there. We, they don't have that ordinance. We have the ordinance, we use it for safety because if they stand in those islands in the middle of the median, chances of it falling, you never know. So we do, for those who want to call to the police department directly, if you see something like that, by all means. Because those folks, they also walk into the street, they come in and out, aggressive panhandling, things of that nature. So nowhere in a city median is anybody to be. The city ordinance basically reads that if you go from one side of the street, like from point A to point B, the only time you're ever going to be in that median, in that little island, is if you were walking so slow that you got stopped by the light and you got to wait and then you continue on to the next. But nowhere in the city will you have anybody in there that's, that's legitimate. The two 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 four thousand, yes, ma'am, to the main police number, that's not a nine one one call. Anybody else? Okay, I think we're going to head out to lunch, guys. Thank you so very much, we'll let you guys continue.
Okay, thank you. Sue, can I ask you to come up and talk about the parade a little bit?
Is there someplace I'm supposed to hold this? Okay, it's all right. So it started back in June, believe it or not, in the middle of the summer and someone said, gee, we ought to have a parade again. So about four of us have been working pretty hard to make that happen and pulling in everybody that we could. It'll be November 29th. There are about 25 groups and that includes things like the honor guard, the grand marshal. The grand marshal will be Buzz Tice, who is a World War II veteran at ninety six, still playing tennis. And he will be our grand marshal. Um, there are groups, there will be some skits like from the line dancers and some of the other clubs. There will be motorcycles, cars, classic cars, Jeeps, smart cars. Uh, there may be more people in the parade than there will be to watch, which is excellent actually. And I will be sending out and posting information on where people can park and where they can put their lawn chairs to watch the parade. Anything else I'm forgetting? I don't think so. Hmm? The actual parade will start at nine o'clock. We do plan at this point to let people put their lawn chairs out the night before after seven. And we'll have where you can do that, which is basically along the sidewalks, along Happy Trails Boulevard. The route will be happy from the ranch where the staging will happen, along Happy Trails Boulevard and back here to the town center. Yes, I will, thank you. Shadow Ridge High School Marching Band, a seventy five member band will be participating in this parade. Shadow Ridge is a not quite as well off high school and they have won awards for their band. And so we will be having a fundraiser for them, so bring your money, bring it with you. You'll have to anyway, because Chef Peter is also putting on special lunches you can get. And in addition, they have a group, an engineering group, it's an af, did I do that? After school activity, um, where they have built a solar golf cart. They designed it, built it, they have showed it a few places and it's won some awards too. That will be here and they will also be recipients of the fundraiser. So thank you Sharon for reminding me of them. And that's all I have, so please either come and watch or join. And Vicki, what do you, how many people you got? You still want to be in it, right? Okay, you're on the list. Okay.
All righty, before we, we go too much further, I just have an update, excuse me, in regards to roofing project. Um, we have, uh, Phoenix Roofing and Repair that will be on the property beginning Monday. Um, they are going to be starting tearing off the roof over, um, by quilt rooms one and two. That's going to be the area that they're going to begin. Um, so when you, when you see the roof that is, is now bright blue because they dried it in, that's what's happening. They're going to tear off the existing metal, um, they're going to stage in the far, uh, east end of the town center parking lot. They'll fence that area off in a small location so they can secure all their, their material and items. Um, and then we'll focus on that, that far side of town center. We have one third of town center that will have to be, um, completely, uh, you know, pulled off and, and reapplied. And then of course NC one that will happen. We're estimating, um, about sixty days for completion. Um, so we will go into this a little bit. They're going to have to phase it out when we're doing the town center, of course, because we're going to have to block off certain areas. So our plan is to, um, while they're working on a particular area, we'll block that area and allow access on each side of that so that folks can go to the mail center, folks can go to the main office, library, et cetera. So it may be a little bit of a fiasco getting through here and there, but we'll make sure that everyone's safe, secured and it's done as efficiently as possible. Um, when, when we get to the portion that is covering the, the exterior mailboxes, they will set up a scaffolding that will create, uh, essentially a hallway in that area. So when folks check their mail, no one's going to get any kind of depre coming off the roof, um, from any of the workers doing that, that portion. So we will make sure that it's secured, um, bear with us, there'll be communication points out there. If you have an issue, you see an issue, um, I will be the point of contact in this project. So please don't hesitate to reach out to us. Um, if there's something going on, if you need additional access or if there's some issues getting to where you need to be, um, we'll make it happen throughout this phase, but that is coming this upcoming Monday. So, uh, other than that, I, I don't have any other, vendors day tomorrow, yes, vendors day tomorrow. Our first vendors day, uh, it sounds like Thelma's got a full house. Um, so we look forward to seeing everybody here on property and, and having all the, the joy and, and, uh, fun that we do every year. So, uh, at this time, I'll open it up for some questions. If anybody has any questions, I ask you, please come up to the, the podium. No questions? We must've, we must've had plenty of meetings this month, I tell you, or last month. I feel like I've seen everyone's faces for every week.
Robert Ernest, lot seven twelve, not a question, just a reminder, if you don't have your Veterans Day tickets, please get those or just come on by. We, uh, we have a little surprise for Veterans Day this year. So that'll be Saturday, the 11th and we look forward to seeing y'all there.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I guess we're done for the day. Thank you all for coming, hope you have a wonderful day. Patty is still here, if anyone has any questions for her, um, she's.